Yeah.
There's multiple things, yeah. My good.
Exactly. So it was a full misunderstanding.
I thought he was.
Yeah. He was worried about. Yeah.
Good evening. I'd like to call. I'd like to call the March ninth, two thousand twenty-two regular board meeting to order. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here. I'd like to take a moment. District two hundred and specifically Wheaton Warrenville South High School community suffered a tragic loss this past weekend of a student Holden White. I'd like for us to rise for a moment and have a moment of silence, then followed by the pledge.
Could follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Communication from our host school, actually schools tonight. We have both of our high school principals, Mr. Biskin and Mr. McDermott, here to report on Wheaton Warrenville South and Wheaton North.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. Starting off, there's, there's no doubt that the Wheaton North faculty, staff, and students are grateful for a consistent school year. That has been a gift, and we're very pleased about that. There's a lot of things, obviously, that go on at our high school on an everyday basis. We always talk about the idea that learning does not just occur within a desk in a room in a classroom, right? It can occur in various forms. One of those I'd like to highlight tonight. We have a new club this year called our eSports Club. Brian Zeglin, who is our social studies department chair, leads that. And there is a wonderful and deep cross-section of students from different backgrounds that are part of that group. I'm going to talk a little bit about it here, just so you understand what it truly is, because this is something as a kid that I did. Played Atari, video games. And now it is at a point where kids are building skills that will transfer well beyond the walls of Wheaton North, so I'll talk a little bit about that now. Wheaton North joined a growing number of high schools in forming an eSports program this school year. The team provides a club opportunity for anyone to participate in our Monday Club program, where students can play a variety of consoles for an hour after school. We also, we also offer a competitive team with tryouts, practices, athletic eligibility, grade checks, et cetera. eSports takes the form of organized multiplayer video game competitions that can be competed either online or in person. The IHSA will hold their first state series in April for three games, Super Smash Brothers, NBA Two K Twenty-two, and Rocket League. In addition, Wheaton North participates in the IHSEA, which runs two games per season, with nearly one hundred high schools participating this school year. Currently, we have multiple teams participating in both Valorant and Fortnite leagues, played from home, while we actively fundraise the money to purchase the computers that would provide access for all students to participate. Earlier this winter, we had five students who represented Wheaton North who participated in the in-person Super Smash Brothers Ultimate tournaments at Naperville North and Springfield High Schools. Two hundred and forty students were in participation from fifty-three schools. The livestream on Twitch, which the announcing was done by students of the Naperville North tournament, was viewed by half a million viewers. Not only does our team offer gameplay, but it also provides students the opportunity to participate in the marketing, streaming, announcing, and video editing related to the general organization of programs, as well as the production of competitions and tournaments. In addition to game players, collegiate eSports programs also provide scholarships for students who enter their programs, providing these career skills. We're proud of Mr. Zeglin and our eSports Club members. So it is a wonderful opportunity for students to get experience from just playing games to building servers that others can play games through. So it's great development of skills and bonds, and it connects students to our schools. So we're very, very proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Biskin.
Good evening. My, my trajectory might have been very different had we had that when I was in high school. I was definitely a pinball wizard. I want to thank everyone for all your support this year and, and giving us the ability to get back as close as possible to really familiar opportunities for our kids, both in and outside of the classroom. I'm really proud of all the creativity that our staff has shown in creating new, new opportunities for our kids. But I do want to highlight one that brought us back to a place before COVID. Last Thursday, we had our fashion show. And the fashion show, if you've never been to the fashion show at Wheaton Warrenville South, you're missing out on an epic event. It was a, the entire auditorium was filled, every single seat, and it was run entirely by kids, out of our fashion and merchandising class. And how that works is they, they plan the show. Nikki Doyle, who's the teacher and, and the sponsor of that, gets the kids to plan the show, and then they pick an organization that they want to fundraise for. This year, they picked the International Rhett Syndrome Foundation. Rhett Syndrome is a neurological disorder primarily found in girls. It impacts cognitive functioning, learning, sensory motor, motor functioning, and it usually doesn't show until about six to eighteen months of age. This year, they, one of our students, Maddie, took the, took the lead in that, and, and she did a lot of research on that, and then she found someone in our own school community that is afflicted with, with Rhett Syndrome. And you can actually find more information on, on that young lady. She's got a, an organization called Cammy Can. And I want to read to you what, what she and her parents posted after the, after the fashion show last week. They said, "Last night was Wheaton Warrenville South's fashion show. It's an iconic event at the high school, especially for seniors. Fashion merchandising class organized and put the entire production on. This year, an awesome student and an even more stellar of a human being, Maddie, reached out to see if Cammy and RhettSyndrome.org could be this year's charity of choice. We are honored and humbled." But it didn't stop there. Cammy and Ryan got to walk and roll the runway in front of a sold-out auditorium. They did an outstanding job. Ryan worked the crowd, tossing Cammy Can shirts into the audience. And they said, "I think we need to invest in a T-shirt cannon. We're looking into that." "Thank you, Wheaton Warrenville South, for raising more awareness and telling our story. It was an honor to be part of this must-attend event." Really, really proud of the work that, that our kids did to find something that was not only important but relevant to our school community. And I'm really proud to say that this year, they raised three thousand dollars, which was double the most that they had ever raised before. Just a great example of some of the really wonderful things happening in, in our building, and I want to thank you for giving us the space to do that.
Thank you, Mr. McDermott.
Thank you.
Next, are there any modifications to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to recognitions and achievements. First up is high school national merit finalists of our high school principals.
Yep. They're going to come, come back up, and as Mr. Biskin and Mr. McDermott do to recognize our students, just want to remind the, the board and our community that this very important and tremendous academic celebration of our students comes to be each year through about one point five million students that can start this recognition process. And out of that one point five million students, about fifty thousand are actually recognized as a part of the national merit program. About thirty-four thousand of those students are recognized as commended students, and about sixteen thousand become national merit semifinalists or finalists. And again, that represents about one percent of the, that population that began the celebration. So we're really pleased tonight to recognize four students in District two hundred that have achieved this incredible recognition, and I'm going to let Mr. Biskin start first with the Wheaton North students.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. There's no doubt this is a great achievement. It serves as an example of both of their hard work, drive, and passion for learning, but more importantly, they're both wonderful kids. This year, Wheaton North is proud to recognize and honor Maggie Larson and Danny Janiak. If they could join me up front, please give them a hand.
Could have Mr. McDermott come up and hang, hang tight if you want to stay up this way while we introduce our South students.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Embedded in, in a national merit award is all the work that goes in, in, in the district that the students attend and the hard work that, and support from the parents. So just a, a thank you to you and to the parents as well. We're very fortunate to have two wonderful seniors who are national merit finalists. Please welcome Linayak Barron and Joshua Negrelli.
Students, congratulations. If you could, I'd love all four of our national merit students. Want to bring back a tradition that we used to do with all board recognitions, and that is an opportunity to thank you, congratulate you for your tremendous accomplishment. If I could ask you to, to come up, might feel a little bit awkward, but I'd love for you to just come up and give each board member a chance to, to personally congratulate you. So if you could just kind of start with Mr. Paulson and make your way around the, the circle, we'd like to recognize you tonight.
We have another recognition. Mr. Biskin, if you could join us back up here again. Mr. Biskin, Wheaton, Wheaton North High School Principal, Illinois Association, DuPage Region High School Principal of the Year. Congratulations.
At times like these, I, I don't know what to say, really, but I am very humbled. I am honored. I, I believe that the recognition is in honor of the work and support of many, many people. I'd like to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Schuler, and our senior leadership team, our faculty and staff, our students and their families, my leadership team, Jim Venkus, Julie Pavlini, Matt Fisher, and Alexia Ellet. They've been incredibly supportive, especially over the last two years, and they've been very patient, and I thank them for that. My secretary, Mary Bischoff, who puts up with me every day, my colleagues in the Duquesne Conference and surrounding schools, former principals, Jill Bulow, Ralph Hetherington, Chuck Baker. Most importantly, my family, my mom and dad, my kids. What's, the funny part is, they, they couldn't care less what my title is, and they remind me of that every day. Dan, Mike, Molly, and Maggie, loving to death. My wife, Liz, who's taking care of things tonight, like she always does, holds a family together. She's the glue that holds us together, reason I'm able to do my job. She's the greatest. I guess that's all I got to say. Thank you so much. I appreciate the honor. Happy to be in our district, honored to be in our district, and I'm glad that the award recognizes the work of a lot of people. Thank you.
Can you join us, Mr. Biskin? We have another recognition and achievement tonight. Maya Colombo, Wheaton Warrenville South High School, first female wrestler to qualify for IHSA state competition. Maya?
Bring, I'm going to bring Maya up to the, to the podium. So this year was the very first time that IHSA had a state wrestling competition for, for girls, and Maya is the first ever wrestler to qualify for that state competition from District two hundred. And loved watching your progress through that, that state tournament, through all of the, the different tweets. Maya, congratulations. Tremendous accomplishment. You will always be a part of District two hundred history.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maya. Can you join us?
Okay. Next up is Board President Report. I only have two short things. First, I had the opportunity to visit Emerson School last week. It was interesting to go into classrooms and see a common theme. And so Principal Debbie Klein had told me they were going to be working on, working in, working together, working in groups, working through conflict as they, as they were working together. And it was just, I, I had so much fun with kindergarten and second graders, especially when one of the students came up to me and said, "You are a stranger in our room." And I, I just thought, I, I was very glad that he, he had pointed that out and showed him my badge, and he felt a little better about that. So it was great to spend the morning with, with students and staff at Emerson. I only have one more thing. Later this month is a quarterly, large-unit president, get, meeting that I meet with the Illinois Association of School Boards President Tom Bertrand. Board members, if you have anything you would like me to bring up at that meeting, please feel free to reach out to me for that. Next up, Dr. Schuler.
Thank you, Mrs. Crabtree. So under my superintendent report tonight, just a couple of things that I wanted to share, update, celebrate with the, the board, and then I'll give our, our usual COVID update. So first, we had a couple of recognitions this evening of some of our winter activities. I do want to recognize, congratulate all of our winter sport and activity groups. Most of those wrapped up in the last couple of weeks. We had students that did tremendous at, at speech competitions, on, on our courts. We had a basketball team at North that made it to sectional final. We had a basketball team at South, made it to a sectional final. Really just incredibly fun to see. And, and also, we, we got, I think, a great update recently from not a, not a school-based activity, but we even have a first robotics team in the community that did incredibly well this Friday. I'm going to have an opportunity to actually go visit with that team and learn a little bit about their robotics opportunity and, and their national-level competition, I think, coming up that they're going to participate in. So fun to see, awesome. This weekend, we have the Coral Classic at Wheaton Warrenville South. Excited to bring back that opportunity. In fact, I think we have a visitors, visitor to South tomorrow, who is going to be both previewing that event and, I think, doing a little bit of singing and dancing with some of our kids. So if you're looking for something to do both Friday and Saturday, tremendous opportunity at Wheaton, Wheaton Warrenville South to enjoy the arts. I do just want to mention, share my appreciation, certainly for the team at Wheaton Warrenville South that has supported both our student and our staff community at that building through a very difficult week, but I'm, I'm reminded so much of the appreciation for our mental health supports and providers in our schools as we navigate through a challenging week. I want to preview an opportunity coming up in a couple of weeks, and bowl for the torch, I believe it is a week from Saturday. Very special opportunity to support some of our, our special services department and some exciting activities. I believe that's happening on Saturday at Fox Bowl, if I'm not mistaken. I want to thank our PTA Council, again, coming up in a little over a week. On March twenty-first, PTA Council is going to be doing their PTA reflections, recognition of our students. Another tremendous opportunity to recognize some students in a couple of different forms of the arts, both performing and visual arts that have participated in that contest and are being recognized. Again, thank you to the PTA Council for their ongoing support. And then finally, I wanted to mention to the board and to the community that we are actively working on the development of our strategic plans. So back in January, as we brought forward our Portrait of a Graduate, that launched our strategic planning process, and we've been meeting with each of our, our board committees, both to share draft of the strategies and the plan and discuss the, the engagement and feedback opportunities that are going to come up through end of March, through April, and, and early May. And our intent is still to bring that strategic plan to the board for your approval in June. We want to finish it in June. It will come to you before June, so you have an opportunity to see it and provide some feedback once we've, we've gone through the community and, and staff engagement around it. So very much looking forward to, to mapping out some, I think, really important strategies for our school district as we continue to, to move forward. So as I transition then just into what has been a, a monthly data update around COVID, and again, just a reminder that a few weeks back, we made some adjustments to our universal mitigations in both releasing the requirement for universal masking and quarantine. We followed shortly after an update from CDC, a little over a week ago, we released the required masking on buses. And so what you'll see tonight reflects what is our most recent data point that just shows where we are relative to, to COVID, even with some of the adjustments that we've made. So as of noon today, on our current dashboard, we've had seventeen student cases this week. As you, you look at that chart and what that looks like from the peak in early January, we have steadily come down each week. We've had two staff cases this week as well, so that's been a, a steady decline as well. Very, very difficult to, to see on this chart, but this is just a reminder that every day we do post a daily dashboard update in cases by, by buildings. And again, we, we have many schools that have, have not had cases recently in this week, so numbers have continued to be relatively low. Community-wide cases per hundred thousand, we have dipped below a hundred thousand, or a hundred cases per hundred thousand for the first time recently, and that came down even a little bit more as of today. So we've seen kind of a slow, steady decline. Our vaccination percentages have held, have actually ticked up just slightly, both at the elementary, middle school level, where we're just under eighty percent, and high school level, where we are just over eighty percent. And again, those have held pretty steady, ticked up ever so slightly. We do continue to monitor our, the MIT Safe Indoor Hours tool, and of course, with the data points that you see, we continue to be in a, in a very positive place in terms of what that tool is telling us. And then the other piece that I just want to mention is, in our region, hospital bed availability trends in a positive direction, as well as, I think, ICU bed utilization is just over seventy percent, I think seventy-one percent, which is in a, a good, healthy place. We do continue to do any outbreak investigation. I think we currently have three spaces across the district that have any kind of targeted mitigation, just based on, on multiple cases, and a couple of those do drop off of that this week. We have not added any new kind of outbreak or clustered investigations as we've gone through this week, so we do remain in a, in a very positive place. And with that, just the, the one piece that I, that I do want to mention, there's one other universal mitigation that we've been watching very closely, especially at a number of our elementary schools. Our distancing at lunch has caused us to use some spaces in the building for lunch that we would otherwise like to be using for physical education and library learning center. And so we've been working with our teams and do anticipate that in the next couple of weeks, we're going to of weeks, we're going to make that final transition as well to bring our lunch spacing in line with our classroom spacing, which will allow us to recapture those spaces, especially at the elementary schools. So that's really the one other kind of system-wide mitigation that we'd like to make an adjustment to, and we anticipate probably early next week making an announcement on that. So I will answer any questions that board members have, either on the metrics and/or any of the other updates.
Quick question, since you ended with the lunch mitigation. Will that be for middle school as well?
We're looking at it, middle school. I will tell you, at the middle school, they don't really help us in terms of capturing spaces at the middle school. So we're still looking at kind of the benefits of adjusting some spaces at the middle school. Our primary focus is making the adjustment at the elementary schools, where we're losing space as a result of the way lunch is organized.
So I'm curious what's standing in the way of making lunch a little more typical, social for the students.
Yeah, and I guess what I would say too is that, so as we adjust that space, we cannot go back to simply, at least in the immediate, the regular bench tables, where we've got students shoulder to shoulder. And so students would still be spaced. It's a matter of six versus three feet. So I guess, to answer your question, surely, we're not going to be able to just transition back to what kind of lunch tables used to look like at the start of the year until we're able to completely adjust distancing requirements completely. So I guess that...
And when, like, when would that be? What are we, I'm just curious what we're waiting for. I was in the middle school last week, and I'm not during lunch, so I'm not sure if, you know, what it may actually look like, but seeing the desks spaced so far apart and all facing in one direction didn't seem very socially engaging. But is there a certain metric or point in time that we will expect more social lunch?
Yeah, so right now, our operational distancing definition is still three feet as much as possible, right? That hasn't changed or adjusted, even in the kind of the umbrella guidance we look at. I don't know when, I don't have a set date when I anticipate that being adjusted. I have seen that with some of the recent adjustments that CDC made, I do expect some school guidance to get adjusted soon on that. But again, so we can reorganize desks and have kids facing each other, but really, the significant move at the middle school is when we can get back to actually using regular lunch tables. I don't know if that is going to happen in this school year. That may be an adjustment that ends up getting made at the front end of next school year.
Okay, I guess maybe I'm puzzled, and maybe something will come out in guidance, just because our students go to restaurants with us and have a social gathering. I'm curious why school is different still.
Yeah.
But, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and all I would say to you is that there is a specific set of guidance for a congregate setting like a school that still set spacing at three feet as much as possible. So I hear your concern. I just have not seen that updated yet in the guidance document.
But are high school students are lunching as typical?
They are, but you also want to recognize the way that seating is arranged at the high school, there are different tables. So they're round tables, individual seats versus long bench tables, where students are literally just kind of sitting shoulder to shoulder on bench tables.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Just a quick follow-up. I just think with how difficult this spring transition has been with different parents' understandings of mask mitigations, I think we should continue to follow the guidance and not rush in the decisions that don't have direct implications on the learning, like at the elementary school, just to be, continue to be mindful that people have very different understandings of what these mitigation removals mean for their lives, that we just continue to follow that same piece by the guidance that we've been doing.
And is the guidance from the CDC?
Any other questions or comments? Next up is public comment. In accordance with board policy 2.230, members of the public wishing to offer public comment have the opportunity to do so. A public comment signup sheet was made available until 7:00 PM. Board meetings are available for viewing via the live stream on the district's YouTube channel. As with all comments, please be aware that it is the board's regular practice to not directly discuss, ask questions, or take action on public comments until the time has been taken to gather adequate information. The board is there to listen. Lack of action or direct response following public comments does not imply any lack of interest in what is being shared. Per board policy 2.230, the time allotted for public comment may be shortened. We will not be doing that tonight. We have five people, so we can keep it at the three minutes. To preserve confidentiality, the board and its president request that items relating to either personnel or students be provided to the board privately or in writing for consideration in a future closed session if necessary. The board must protect the civility and decorum of the meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board, our district leadership team, and the democratic process in your public comments. Please include your name, whether you are a resident of the district. Limit your comments to three minutes. We are using a new timing system that worked very well last time. Mr. Hanlon has a clock over here that will count down, so you have a visual to be there for you, and that will help with keeping us on time. Please be factual and courteous, and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. First up is Ryan Kipfer.
I don't usually have notes, but last month was supposed to be my last board meeting, but I had to come back from Florida to get my car, so I figured school board meeting night would be a good night to come back. For what it's worth, which is probably very little by comparison to the gravity of the circumstances, I want to thank Ms. Crabtree for leading a moment of silence to give everyone a chance to pray silently for the young man who passed away this week. Again, probably doesn't mean much, but thank you. Transitioning to the main part of my public comment is I'd like to point out the absurdity of virtually no one here wearing a mask. As much as I like to see faces, three weeks ago, I was more than once called, you know, things like a bioterrorist for not wearing a mask in public. And now, a couple days after a magic day that, I don't know really what happened, masks just suddenly became totally unnecessary. It seems kind of absurd. I'd also like to back up Ms. Blatner. She brought up a good point. Why continue the mitigations during lunch? Nothing else seems to have made a significant difference. Why ruin one of the fun parts of the children's day? It doesn't, nothing has made a difference. Kids sit shoulder to shoulder on the bus, masks no longer there, numbers continue to drop, so it doesn't seem as if mitigations really matter. By the way, they don't. There'll be more from others later, but I also want to just mention that I think the board and the superintendent should honestly do some soul searching and ask, who's in charge when the principal allows, the principal, a highly-paid administrator allows a faculty-sponsored group to say certain students are allowed to use vulgar language when many parents, I'm a parent for what it's worth, but in this case, it's not really apropos, but parents of all races are opposed to their children using a vulgar word, and this one word in particular is vulgar and demeaning. Again, think about it. I'd also like for the board to consider allowing more time for public comment. I get it, you can't have unlimited comments or be here till tomorrow, but perhaps breaking up the public comment, doing another meeting or something. But I know you guys don't get paid, and that would be a lot to ask, and there's no perfect solution. But three minutes doesn't seem like enough time when you're trying to hear from the public. And the last point I want to get to, and I'm going to have to just get through it quickly, is I think the board should do, seriously consider doing a better job vetting candidates and considering who they endorse. In light of the Madigan scandal, you know, this whole, you know, board members, elected officials doing transactions, what appears to be, or what they would claim to be an arms-length transaction, isn't really arms-length, when you could potentially have someone whose company is doing millions of dollars' worth of work for the school district on the board while, you know, ostensibly or purportedly abstaining from negotiations, when that's not really possible, when you're friends with everybody on the board. Again, that's another charade, and I think the board should seriously consider endorsing and not endorsing candidates who have conflicts of interest, if, you know, if that situation were to arise. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kipfer. Next up is John Graham.
Hi, thank you, Dr. Schuler and the board. It came to my attention just yesterday that at Edison Middle School, there's been a number of racially-inspired comments and conflict in the school, and nobody likes to see that. And so I commend the administration of that school, and for anybody else here involved, for stepping in and trying to squash that and address that in a reasonable timeframe. So that's how it seemed. However, I know that diversity, equity, and inclusion are pillars that the district stands on and values, and I commend you for that. However, a number of things happened in these, what I'll call mitigation attempts the other day, that were actually a bit disturbing. I looked back on some of the slides that these students were shown, other students in the ELA meeting, and I know this was put on by the Panthers of Black Group, which my understanding was only, black students only were allowed to participate in this, in this group. That does not seem very diverse and inclusive of anybody that wants to be involved in that capacity. Second point is, a number of students were involved in this, and I quote in one of their slides, said, "In general, there's no reason to ask," and they mean, "Don't ask about race." They said, "Race shouldn't be a reason to treat anyone differently." I fully agree, and I would hope all of us here would agree, that race is not a reason to treat anyone differently at all. However, the students went on a little bit later to say, "In regards to the use of an offensive word, the N-word, which we all know and variations of it," the students said that variations of it are acceptable only to certain races, which I find not very equitable and not really respectful at all. And I think we could all agree on that, that any variations of a word such as that shouldn't be tolerated whatsoever. And so I was disturbed to find that these students were allowed to present this to their fellow students, and that the administration was probably behind this. So I think you all have some work to do to vet the curriculum and the indoctrination that some of these kids are being given, and this type of rhetoric and hateful speech, it doesn't stand in my house. And my kids attend this school, by the way, I forgot to mention, I have three children in the district, two of which attend this school, and I would hope that they're not subject to this kind of garbage, this kind of treatment. Now, I will give some of these students credit, that much of what they talked about was very respectful and informative to others. But I would hope that you would vet some of this curriculum a little bit better, because it didn't seem very diverse, equitable, and inclusive whatsoever. And my kids, if they are subjected to that, I'd like the option for them to opt out of some of that and have additional visibility from parents like myself, so we can see what this curriculum is that's being taught to our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Next up is Greg Higgins.
Good evening, Mr. Schuler and members of the board. I'm Greg Higgins. I haven't spoken to you for a long time. Some of you are new. My last was in front of you when we were fighting the fight for Jefferson. I'm glad that was successful. You know, a lot of people come to here and they're here to complain. I must really hate this time. I can't pretend, I might pretend that you don't, but you must hate it. I'm not here to complain or lodge a complaint or complain about anything. I'm here to thank you. The last two years were really difficult. And you signed up to be board members and went through that process and all the work that you have to do. Part of that was not the level and degree of changes and issues that you had to deal with in the last two years. That's not what you signed up for. But you had to do it anyway. We had a long degree of people that have different feelings on things, some kind of crazy, some very reasonable. Most of the people that don't show up here are pretty reasonable people. And the thing that I wanted to make sure of is that you understand that a lot of us out there that aren't here every night complaining about it, it's because we don't need to. So thank you for what you do every night. And, you know, even me, I lose my temper occasionally. I sent you an email last month, probably not the best of taste, so I apologize for that. Even I get upset sometimes. But I wanted to make sure that you understood kind of what's next. You know, the mask tyranny thing is over, but what's next? What's next and what's coming down the path is parent choice. It sounds great on paper, right? That's how it's cloaked, parent choice. Who's going to object to parent choice? What it really means, though, is particular parents' choices, not everybody's parent choices. And you can see that coming in the way of, well, what's acceptable to my kids on issues of discussion of history, good and bad? What's in relation to sexual education, and what's good and bad? And they're going to try and make your lives miserable, because they don't want reasonable people like you to do this job. They don't want people that reflect the majority of people here to do this job. So I want you to remember that. And I want you, when you feel sad about your job and you feel frustrated, most of us out there are happy about what you're doing. Last thing I'll leave you with is when they come in here and they start complaining about books, I want you to remember one really important book that's out there. It's almost in every school and almost every library. And this book has a story about two daughters that had sex with their father to get pregnant and got them drunk, and it's in every single reference library. You know what that book is? The Bible. Genesis, Chapter 19, Verse 35. So when anybody comes in here and starts talking about their particular religious beliefs, about getting rid of books that they don't approve for sex education, please remember that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Next up is Alicia O'Connell.
I am speaking to you tonight about a very unsettling presentation shared with all Edison students by the Panthers and Black Club, a group currently only open to black students. Non-black students need not apply, because it appears discrimination is alive and well at Edison Middle School. While students in our district are struggling to recover from severe loss of learning and the consequences of mitigations, a group of eighth-grade African-American girls, along with a teacher and principal, have burdened unassuming children with charges of racial insensitivity, and were told what they can and cannot say or ask. This during class time. Of the 18-slide presentation, three slides in particular are extremely disturbing. Allow me to read verbatim from the slides. Slide one. Origin of the N-word. There are different endings, such as ER and A, which have two different meanings. Slide two. Use of the N-word ending in ER. Despite the fact that you may listen to music or read books that have those two endings of the N-word, it is not okay to say it if you are not African-American. At the end of the day, if you are not African-American, do not say it in capital letters. Slide three. Use of the N-word ending in A. Only African-Americans can use it in this context, not other races. There is no such thing as an N-word pass, so don't ask for it or take it, even if it is given to you by someone part of the African-American community. Please help me understand the mind of an adult who thinks that eighth graders advising sixth graders about the proper use of the N-word is appropriate. If the N-word with an A is considered offensive, no group of children should be exposed to or permitted to use it during school hours. Would the district bless the use of the terms cracker or honky to be used only by white children? This is an absurdly inconsistent ethical message, and it is shameful no adult recognized it, either during its drafting or presentation. The following are questions community members would like answered. What is the protocol for controversial topics like this to be presented to children without their parents' knowledge or consent? Is there documentation of allegations of racially-charged comments made by dumb black students? If so, what disciplinary action was taken, and why was the entire school subject to this presentation as a response? Does every race now have the opportunity to present their monolithic thinking about identity, including their grievances and demands from those of a different race? Does District 200 support the illegal exclusion and discrimination of its students through groups formed solely on racial identity or skin color?
Thank you, Mrs. O'Connell.
Thank you.
Next up is Jeanne Ives.
Thank you, members of the board. Well, you just heard Alicia. She did a fantastic job.
job bringing this to everybody's attention. The question is, how in the world did this happen? How is it that a, you know, an administrator actually goes ahead and says, "Oh, we're going to do a presentation, and we're going to let eighth graders use the N-word and teach other kids about how to use the N-word?" I mean, how did this even come to be? It is inconceivable to me that adults had this type of conversation with an all-black club at this time in 2022. It is more divisive to do this than it is inclusive. And if you don't believe that, then I just don't understand where you're coming from with all your DEI and CRT stuff, because it is divisive. Who knew about this? Who knew about this? Who in the administration knew that they were going to do a presentation like this? We want answers. Let us know when you figure it out. Somebody should be fired over this. Somebody should lose their job. Anybody who thinks that it was okay to go ahead and do a presentation with 12-year-olds about who can and cannot use the N-word needs to lose their job. It's ridiculous. And as far as COVID goes, it's over. COVID's over. It's time to apologize. It's time to apologize for putting small kids in masks when you're trying to do speech therapy. It's time to apologize to put them in front of a screen and call it learning. It's time to apologize for all the hypocritical rules that you've done and put kids through, and the mental trauma that you've put kids through, and the lack of learning. And then it's time to get the right COVID data on the screen. And that would include specifically telling us how you used every single of COVID relief money in this district, specifically telling us exactly what the learning loss is for every single student in this district and what you've done to mitigate that. That's what we need data on. It's not how many cases. Cases don't matter, you know that. You know they don't matter. You still fictitiously are putting this stuff together. I mean, honestly. You guys are all professionals here, all professionals, all have all the credentials, and this is what we get. District 200 is better than this, and you know it.
Okay, that concludes our public comment. Next up is the consent agenda. Approval of Advanced Placement AP Science, Literature, and Culture Textbook. Approval of Advanced Placement Art History Textbook. Approval of Advanced Placement French Language and Culture Textbook. Approval of Advanced Placement Physics Textbook. Approval of Introduction to Teaching Textbook. Approval of Accounting 1 and 2 Textbook. Approval of Forensic Science Textbook. Approval of Web Design 1 and 2 Textbook. Approval of French 4 Textbook. Approval of Professional Learning Expenditure Request for Board Members. Approval of the Resolution to Authorize Transfer Repayable Interfund Loan from Working Cash Fund to IMRF Fund. Approval of Resolution to Authorize Transfer Repayable Interfund Loan from Working Cash Fund to Education Fund. Approval of Bills Payable and Payroll. Approval of Minutes February 6, 2022. Emergency Meeting Open and Closed February 9, 2022. Open and Closed February 23, 2022. Regular Meeting and Committee of the Whole. An Approval to Destroy Recordings of Closed Sessions Prior to October 2020 is allowable by law. Approval of Personnel Report to Include Employment, Resignation, Retirement, and Leave of Absence of Administrative, Certified, Classified, and Non-Union Staff. Are there any items board members want removed from the consent agenda? Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, just one quick comment on the approval of the personnel report the board this evening. We'll be approving the appointment of Mary Davis to become the next principal at Jefferson Early Childhood Center. Mary has been a valued member of our administrative team and our Student Services, Special Services Department, has more educational degrees than I think anybody else that I've ever seen on a, on a resume, has about every experience you could possibly imagine, and we are excited this evening to welcome Mary as the new principal at Jefferson.
Are there any questions or comments from board members for Dr. Schuler? Hearing none, I ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Booton. Second by Mr. Hanlon. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next is approval, policy approval consent agenda. The following 22 revised policies are for approval: 4.160, 4.170, 5.10, 5.100, 5.125, 5.150, 5.185, 5.250, 5.330, 5.50, 5.90, 6.180, 6.50, 7.160, 7.180, 7.190, 7.20, 7.200, 7.210, 7.240, 7.30, 7.60. Are there any items board members want removed from the policy approval consent agenda? Dr. Schuler?
No additional information.
Are there any questions or comments for Dr. Schuler? Hearing none, I ask for a motion and a second to approve the policy approval consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Booton. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next up is our first action item, approval to post K-5 math program for community review. I see Mrs. Murphy is walking up there. Dr. Schuler, anything?
No, I'm going to hand it right over to Mrs. Murphy and her team.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening about elementary math. I'm joined tonight by Mrs. Moran, who is the Director for Elementary Instruction and Virtual Learning. She has played a key leadership role in the work that we're presenting this evening. We have four guiding questions for our presentation tonight. We are starting with, what is learning acceleration and how is it implemented in math classes? The COVID-19 pandemic has caused unprecedented disruptions in our regular school routines. We have always served students with varied academic needs in our classrooms, but that landscape has certainly changed due to COVID-19. Our approach to unfinished learning has been acceleration. And I do want to say, this concept of acceleration is not something we have just adopted to support students because of the altered years of learning. It is a high-impact academic approach that will increase student achievement and close achievement gaps. Learning acceleration has been a key strategic focus for our team this year and will continue to be a key focus as we support our students. So what exactly is acceleration? Well, here you'll see that difference between acceleration and remediation. Acceleration is about going forward. It's about preparing students for this success in the present with a focus on current grade level standards. We do revisit past skills and concepts, but they are revisited within the context of what is currently being taught. The opposite would be remediation. That is about spending significant time in below-grade level standards before moving to new learning. Remediation often focuses on drilling students on isolated skills that bear little resemblance to the current curriculum and reviewing everything that's missed. I often give the same example when I talk about acceleration versus remediation. An example of acceleration would be, I know right now, our fifth graders are within the fraction unit in their math classrooms. And acceleration would be for our students who have some unfinished learning. We're integrating those past standards within that fifth-grade unit. So we may be reviewing some fourth-grade fraction standards, but within fifth grade. Remediation would be actually stopping that fifth-grade unit for multiple weeks on end to review the fourth grade unit. That's a very tangible example about the difference between acceleration and remediation. We have prioritized mathematics teaching and learning this school year. Our learning acceleration plan has prioritized mathematics, because those concepts build upon one another, and it makes it very challenging to master new content and skills. Our work plan has included these four items that I want to highlight for you this evening. It has focused on grade-level content for all students. It has focused on pre-assessments and ongoing formative assessments, so we can plan those just-in-time supports. It is focused on best practices of instruction in mathematics as recommended by the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics. And I do want to mention to the board, within your green folders this evening, is a document that looks like this with a blue header. These are the best practices, the eight best practices of teaching that are recommended by the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics, that our teachers have focused on this year. And again, another key strategy has been utilizing a high-quality resource. I also want to mention that our math coaches have been instrumental in supporting and leading our staff with this work. And a reminder to the board, with the federal relief funds, we have been able to expand those math coach positions to support each one of our schools. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Mrs. Moran for the second and the third guiding question.
Thank you. So how does a high-quality resource support learning acceleration? It's important to provide a high-quality resource that supports acceleration over remediation, because it does create a strong coherence within a grade level and between grade levels, really allowing for that horizontal and vertical articulation from grade to grade. It also provides teacher supports that are aligned to the best practices in instruction and ensures long-term success by advancing learning and improving achievement for all students. So how did District 200 engage in a process to recommend this high-quality resource? Here is the timeline that is starting actually from last school year, 2020 to 2021. ZERN was the high-quality resource we piloted last year, and it has a strong digital component. The math committee met last year to monitor this resource and to serve as a feedback loop. The outcome of this committee was a recommendation to pilot a different resource for this school year. This year, in 2020, 2021, 2022, we continue to use ZERN as our main resource. A math pilot committee was created with primary and intermediate teachers, as well as math coaches from all 13 elementary schools. And they piloted a unit or more during the second trimester from the Illustrated Math Resource. Their feedback was reviewed, and the committee made a recommendation. So looking at both of these high-quality math resources, there are a few distinct differences. ZERN was selected because of the digital component, and that really truly served a need that we had through the pandemic and through virtual learning and remote learning. ZERN also provided teachers with lesson guidance in whole-group and small-group settings. Illustrated Math, on the other hand, focuses more on problem-solving, student discourse, and solving real math problems. Rather than having that digital component, Illustrated Math provides several hands-on learning experiences that use real manipulatives to help solve and understand math. There's also a very strong and explicit connection to the teaching practices in scaffolds for all learners. A rationale for this recommendation includes that Illustrated Math creates a strong coherence within a grade level and between grade levels. There are built-in assessments that will help facilitate discussions amongst teachers in their professional learning communities. In addition, there are daily formative, daily checks and assessments, and summative mid- and end-of-unit tests. Illustrated Math provides teacher supports that are aligned to the math practices. It's aligned to the Illinois Learning Standards and the NCTM practices. It also ensures long-term success by advancing learning for all students. It provides an entry point for all students to access the learning and to lean on a student's strength to build on what a student already may know. Illustrated Math provides tasks and assessments that are rigorous and aligned to one another. Assessments are also closely matched to what a student may encounter on a state assessment, such as an IAR test. It's designed around tasks that require math language. It promotes students' use of mathematical language by building on what a student may already know and accessing their background knowledge. Problems presented to students encourage them to talk to one another, to justify their answers and critique one another, and this is done through the use of familiar instructional routines. This truly benefits our multilingual learners and our students with special needs. Finally, Illustrated Math aligns to the portrait of a graduate, especially in the areas of problem solver, resilient learner, collaborator, and communicator.
Thank you, Mrs. Moran. So what are our future plans to support this implementation? Here you'll see a list of all of the activities that we are going to be participating in to continue to support our staff through this implementation. First and foremost, we will have some professional learning coming up on March 24th for our math coaches and our principals to support and lead the instructional vision for mathematics, mathematics teaching and learning. Second, we will have professional learning for all of our staff on getting to know these resources. We are going to be developing the pacing guides and other support materials. Of course, we will have ongoing professional development for our staff next school year, and we also have the ongoing support from our math coaches that are at each of our 13 classrooms, or 13 schools. So tonight, our board presentation does include a recommendation for the board for approval to post these materials, the Illustrated Math for Community Review. But at this time, we are happy to take questions or discussion.
Questions or comments for Mrs. Murphy?
I have a couple.
Okay.
So how many classrooms are currently piloting Illustrated Math?
I'll let Mrs. Moran answer that.
So we had a pilot committee of almost 50 staff members, representation from a primary, a K through 2 teacher from every building, an intermediate, a 3 through 5 teacher from every building. PACE, as well as EL and Special Education, were on the committee.
So, but how many, like how many students are?
So, including the three administrators, we had almost 50, so around maybe 45 teachers from all 13 buildings, so 45 classrooms were piloting.
Okay, thank you. Until last year, the switch to ZERN was from Everyday Math, correct?
No, we had, the district had adopted Math Expressions in 2013.
Which came after Everyday Math. Is that correct?
Everyday Math was a resource that was used in the PACE program a number of years ago. Math Expressions has been a resource that has been used for many years. We adopted the first version multiple years ago, and then we, we adopted the second version in 2013. But the PACE program at one point in time utilized Everyday Math.
Okay, so Math Expressions, then. I'm just curious, we switched to ZERN last year during COVID. Was there any reason, like, why did we switch away from Math Expressions?
Yes. First and foremost, the biggest reason why we made that switch is because during the spring of 2020, we had a committee of teachers that engaged with us and expressed the need for a digital resource with the unknown, unknown learning environment that we were going to be in. And so they strongly advocated that we find a digital resource ready to go. ZERN was a highly-rated resource. During that time period, Mrs. Moran and I were already engaging with our math team and researching and looking, and doing actually the work that you're seeing tonight. We were engaging in that at that point in time, because that resource, Math Expressions, was because that resource, Math Expressions, was actually something we recognized we needed to move away from.
Is that because Math Expressions doesn't offer that digital component? Is that?
That was the biggest reason why we made the switch to ZERN, absolutely.
So does Illustrated Math basically have the same core curriculum?
Yes, Illustrated Math is aligned to the Illinois State Standards, just as ZERN is.
And was Math Expressions as well?
Math Expressions was at the time, yes, aligned to the Illinois Standards. The, what the biggest shift I think you will see is that blue-headed paper that I handed to you, those NCTM teaching practices. Those are new since the adoption of Math Expressions. The National Council of Teachers of Mathematics has done additional research since those state standards came to be. And these are now the recommended shifts of instructional practice that did not exist at the time when we adopted Math Expressions. And this is why we really see the need to make a switch to a new instructional resource.
Okay, thank you. I think I had one more. Nope, that's all. Thank you.
Other questions or comments for Mrs. Murphy?
All right, there we go. Going back to acceleration. And with the mic confusion, my question's not going to be very well worded as I want to, but I'll try. I'm just thinking about the impact in the classroom, so we're adding content into essentially the same time period. So that affects the planning and the classroom experience some way. I'm assuming coaches play a role in that. Can you just talk about how that impacts the classroom and the approach we take in the classroom when we're introducing acceleration content at the same time as standard content?
Absolutely, I'd be happy to. So it all starts first and foremost with, if you go back into the slide deck, there was one point in time when I said what we were focused on, and one of those key focuses was the pre-assessment. And so utilizing that pre-assessment, our PLCs are able to have a conversation about what are the students', what knowledge do they have coming into that unit? And so those pre-assessments contain rich tasks that encompass both the previous grade level content and current grade level content. And so we have the ability to see that range of learners' experiences. And our PLCs are able to sit down and talk before a unit begins and identify those key skills that do need to be addressed within the unit. So within the classroom, obviously, they may have had to make some pacing changes because of the amount of standards they may need to address. But also, our math coaches, as you mentioned, do play a key role in supporting students either within the classroom to help address unfinished learning in small groups, or also in an intervention and helping impair with the classroom experience within the same unit of study.
So the acceleration, and I'm going to really simplify, and if I don't want to, as a layperson, I don't want to get the wrong conclusion. So the acceleration takes place with a, in-classroom with coaching action or outside the classroom, also with coaching action. The classroom teacher, for the most part, focuses on the current content. Is that an appropriate conclusion?
I would say our coaches play a key role in helping our teachers plan that instruction, or maybe in the classroom, but I certainly don't want to diminish the role that our classroom teachers play and also addressing any unfinished learning that may need to be addressed within the classroom as well.
Okay, thank you.
To piggyback on that, does Illustrated Math have differentiation opportunities? Or is our staff having to come up with that on their own?
I'm going to speak to one, and then Mrs. Moran is certainly our expert on the resource that she can answer to others. I will first highlight, one of the reasons why we really are excited about Illustrated Math is the fact that the program, that program comes with a pre-assessment for every single unit of study. And in fact, this was a resource our coaches were already looking at and pulling those tasks this school year to utilize for those pre-assessments. So that will be the first step in terms of differentiation, is getting to know what our students know before that unit begins. Mrs. Moran, do you want to speak to others?
I think the other thing that our pilot teachers really liked about the IM resource is that, and I mentioned this a few moments ago, is that it provides multiple entry points, so every student can access the learning. And what that means is, basically, there are key strategies, they're called instructional routines, that the students will learn, so it becomes a habit as a way that we just do business in class and the way that we learn math. And it's really fantastic for students with special needs or our multilingual learners because they start to become familiar with those routines, and it becomes just a clear habit for them. One of them that I really like is a warm-up activity, it's called Act It Out. And so the teacher will pose a question, and the students then engage in a multisensory approach to act out what the term is or the vocabulary that they're trying to learn. So it doesn't matter where you are in the spectrum of learning, every student has an opportunity to contribute to that activity and to that learning. I think the other important piece of Illustrated Math is that it's very collaborative, and students have many opportunities every single day to talk to one another and to learn from one another. So instead of, you know, students sitting in rows and the teacher kind of being, you know, up there on the stage, kids are engaging with one another and are challenging each other's thinking and engaging in conversation. So I think there's a lot of also just natural access to the curriculum that really helps every student be able to engage in that learning.
I guess, I guess where I'm kind of going with that is, is support for the teachers. You know, I go back to my days of being, and I could have, you know, you do those pre-assessments, you could have kids in such a large spectrum. Are we giving staff help with that, or is everybody kind of doing their own thing? That's where I'm.
I would say that the biggest shift is that having our math coaches available and part of that instructional design and implementation and support is a big, it makes an enormous difference for our staff.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else? Dr. Yubal?
Just, I just have a quick one, just to try to understand. I hear what you're saying, that ZERN was more appropriate for the pandemic. I experienced that as a parent. Going forward, can you just really quickly describe this new math in terms of the use of the laptop, both in the classroom and at home?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Tonight's recommendation, when you see it, we did not include a digital component for that recommendation. Our team did research that, and it wasn't something that we are recommending because the digital component is actually a complete substitution of the student workbook. Therefore, what our team is doing is we are engaging with our instructional technology and innovation coach at the elementary level, and we are researching digital tools that we believe would be a better fit for what we want math instruction and technology integration to look like, to enhance the experience and not substitute it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mrs. Murphy? Thank you.
I don't really have a question, I'll just kind of piggyback on Chris. Certainly philosophically, I support giving our teachers more resources. Just knowing through my teacher group, I hear a lot about the burden they're, they have, and I just want to express my sensitivity to another tool, another resource they have to learn. And I know we're doing that this, you know, early this year, but, you know, as we get into the summer and then preparing for next year, I just want to make sure that we're working with all the elementary teachers, not just the coaches. And, you know, this is, I don't want them to view this as another thing that's getting in the way of everything else they have to do. So I'm just trying to be sensitive to the burden.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I just have one. Rob asked the, kind of my main, my main question that I had. So, but when you brought up about, if I heard you right, that the math coaches are a big piece of this, correct? And I just, I guess I just want to confirm that, because I believe over sometime over the last few years, like there were, we increased the number of math coaches that we have. And so I guess what, we need to make that commitment, it sounds like, to keep our math coaches at the level that they are, at least for this program, to be integrated, am I?
Within the federal relief grant application, those funds that were allocated for that increase go through 2024.
Okay, and so then do we feel like this will, that's enough time for this to be integrated? And then if there's a change in that resource for some reason, that we would still be okay? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I don't anticipate those positions going away. We just, we have a funding source for them, at least through the next two school years. Then it will be incumbent on us to evaluate how we continue that resource, assuming we continue to still find it valuable. So, I guess I, I believe that it will still be a valuable resource and we'll want it. We need to see how the next two years goes with this, with this new set of materials, and then that's just going to have to be a budget decision we make.
Right, but I guess it's something that the board two years from now is going to need to be aware of, that, that if this, if that's really needed for this program, that we need to keep those positions. So I guess that's just my point, is that it's something that needs to be, future boards need to be aware of.
I hear you on it, I, you know, recognize for, our, our team has felt very, very strongly about that form of support for our staff and, and our teachers. That's not going to change on our side as we're formulating budget recommendations for you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I have one more follow-up question to, so, I'm not sure if I understand. So we are still pursuing a digital component independent of Illustrated Math, correct?
We are engaging in a process to research what the best digital component to complement this would be. At this point in time, I don't have one to recommend to you, but our team is doing that work along with a member of Mr. Spencer's department, the Tech and Innovation Coach, is pairing with our elementary math coaches to do that research.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just want to confirm, so we're just approving to post it tonight? And so this will come back next, next meeting for approval?
Yes.
Okay, I need a motion and a second to approve, to post the K-5 math program for community review. Illustrated Math, I'm sorry, for community review. Moved by Mr. Hanlon?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Booton. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next up is approval to post FLESS, Spanish Language Arts Curriculum for second and third grade for community review.
Good evening. Once again, I have the opportunity to speak to you, and I have another team that is going to be joining me in this presentation. I have invited Dr. Pueyo, the Director of Multilingual Learners and Equity, Mr. Edwards, Principal of Johnson Elementary School, and Ms. Vargis, Assistant Principal of Johnson Elementary School, and Ms. Stamakotukas, she is the Principal of Pleasant Hill Elementary School. And at this time, I am going to turn it over to Dr. Pueyo to get us started.
Good evening. So today, we're going to provide you with an update on our Spanish Language Arts programming, which is FLESS. This is our first year of implementation at Johnson and Pleasant Hill. And so we're going to walk you through four guiding questions. What is FLESS, and how does it support academics, social-emotional learning, and equity? How is the program being implemented at Johnson and Pleasant Hill? You'll learn about the curricular work that was completed this year and the future work projects. Our vision for our Spanish Language Arts programming is that we are seeking to enhance our students' cultural understanding while also developing proficiency in Spanish in the areas of listening, speaking, writing, and reading. The program also values multilingualism, multiculturalism, and advocates for a culture that fosters equity and access. The FLESS program, Foreign Language Elementary School, is one programming model for Spanish Language Arts. With FLESS, the target language is Spanish, and it is taught as a separate subject. There's extensive research that suggests learning a new language leads to increased academic achievement and also cognitive function. We know that learning a new language aids students in the development of their reading abilities. Students are also able to transfer the skills they learn in one language to another. It helps students develop enhanced knowledge of English structure and vocabulary. There's also a correlation with enhanced problem-solving skills, verbal and spatial abilities. Research also suggests that students who learn a second language also receive higher standardized scores. The program also supports social-emotional learning and equity. This program unites students of various cultures together, and they are learning a language within the classroom. It helps to support the relationships that enhance the student's sense of belonging and connectedness at schools. It also helps students develop a more positive attitude towards the target language and speakers of that language. The program supports equity from the perspective of windows and mirrors. Students from Spanish-speaking backgrounds can see themselves reflected and can connect to the material that's being taught at school. At the same time, it offers students, non-Spanish-speaking students, a lens into another culture. We know that this leads to increased engagement and more meaningful learning for students. At this time, you're going to hear from the principals at Johnson and Pleasant Hill that will share with you about the implementation at their buildings.
First of all, thank you guys for having us. And thank you guys for supporting the FLESS program in its first year of infancy at both Pleasant Hill and Johnson School. It is a great program. We're excited to be the first two schools to be able to implement this. So we're going to talk about it a little bit and tell you how it's working at each of the schools. First and foremost, we are lucky enough to have all 60 of our, all of our first-grade students participate in the model that we are running at Johnson School, which happens to be running FLESS one day a week on a Friday for one hour. Now, we are experimenting with this, this particular model and the model that Pleasant Hill has to see as we progress, progress this FLESS program the next year, to see which model is actually is best for students. Something else we've been able to do at Johnson Schools, we've been able to have three different bilingual specialists actually run the program. And so we're able to run the program simultaneously at the same time every Friday in all three of the first-grade classrooms. Also allows myself and Emily to get into the classrooms, actually watch how it's being implemented, participate. And Emily's got a chance herself to even teach the program and substitute. Also, what we've seen is some benefits to the FLESS program. I'm going to let Emily talk about that.
Thank you. So as you can see, actually, in this picture, students are engaged in learning, and it's different every single week and every single lesson as we go through. They're not just sitting in chairs and behind the desks. They're up, they're moving, they are playing games, they're doing different activities. Actually, here is an example of TPR, the Total Physical Response. So they were learning about items in a backpack, classroom and school supplies, and they're having to, at different times of the activity, it could be touching a different body part, it could be showing a different movement, it could even be saying the word in Spanish and doing a little dance with it. And it's a really great opportunity for all the students to interact and get to be together, and not only converse with the FLESS teacher, but also their own classroom teacher, which has been a benefit, is all of the students and the classroom teacher are participating in the lesson together.
So one of the things that Emily and I actually talk about quite a bit with not only the classroom. only the classroom teachers and not only with the teachers who are teaching FLESS, just amongst ourselves, is the student self-efficacy. We've seen all the students, their self-confidence raise. We see kids excited when they're in the classroom. We're talking about students who are non-native speakers and also the native speakers are extremely excited. And we got a fact, a chance, in fact, Melissa came with a team and they got a chance to see with their own eyes. Now, the cool thing about FLESS, just like any other classroom, the, the FLESS implementation takes on the life of the person who's actually teaching the program. So when Chris came and Melissa came to kind of observe what was going on and Lee Maurice came to observe, they got a chance to see three different classrooms, the exact same lesson being taught three different ways. And really because depending on the life, depending on the personality of the teacher, really determined how the, how the students were responding in the room. One classroom, we had a teacher who liked to dance and move and have kids up and moving around, and that classroom was rocking and rolling. Next classroom over, teacher liked to have kids a little bit more docile, but also interact with the classroom teacher. I think even got Chris involved in the lesson as well. And then a teacher across the hall had also had a different style. But that's a good thing for us to see, three different implementation styles, because it allows us to see as we try to hire out in the years to come for this position, we know who to look for and what type of individual is going to be, is going to benefit the program the best. Emily?
I think another really exciting thing that we're seeing is our non-native speakers are using this language outside of the classroom and outside of that day. You'll see them walking down the hallway and if they see their FLESS teacher, they're saying, "Hola, como estas?" You know, "My name is..." It's really cute. But not only that, they're using it with each other. It could be walking in the hallway, we're seeing it on the playgrounds at recess, during lunch, even after school, students will say, "Oh, that's your mochila, like that's your backpack." It's like, "You're right, that is your backpack." So it's a really great opportunity and bonding experience for all students to continue to come together and unite and use this language outside of the classroom. And we've even had parents come to us and say that their kids are using this language at home and they're teaching them this language at home, which is getting parents excited to learn more about the language themselves if they're not familiar with it.
Yeah, I just want to highlight one thing that Emily said. She said a lot of great things, but one thing she said brings kids together, right? That's what you want to see, that's what's been beneficial. Not that that was an issue with Johnson, never really has been an issue with Johnson, but it only, what FLESS has done is enhance what's already happening there. And you see confidence, I mean, the word confidence is strong. And when you see kids who are in first grade walking confidently down the hallway because they hear their native language being spoken in classroom and being taught, that's never happened before, you have to see with your own eyes. I can't articulate it, you can, you have to see it, that's all I can say. It's awesome.
Thank you. And I think we've also been lucky enough to have a team that continue to plan together weekly and multiple times a week, and they've really had valuable time together and also valuable insights for, you know, what might it look like down the road? What are some things that we can do to continue to enhance this program? What are some really great things that we're doing? And they've also had the opportunity to collaborate with the teacher at Pleasant Hill as well. So it's really just been a great opportunity for all staff members involved to just continue to unite and reflect on their teaching on a daily basis, in a weekly basis.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure to stand in front of you today and talk about FLESS at Pleasant Hill. I've been really excited to work with this program because I was part of the committee that was looking into the different programming options. And it's a joy to really be a leader and support teachers and students with this Spanish Language Arts opportunity. So currently at Pleasant Hill, we have our Spanish bilingual teacher who works with our first grade, delivering the content to our first-grade classrooms. So we have three days of FLESS per week at 20 minutes per week per section. So she goes in and it alters with our special schedule, so they'll have art, music, and then FLESS, something every day of the week. And she engages with the students. You can see some pictures here. Her name's Liz Cron, she's actually at that top picture in the corner, and I really feel she does an amazing job for our students. So FLESS, the way it's implemented at Pleasant Hill, Mrs. Cron has done such an excellent job of bringing in so many different modalities into her instruction. She incorporates technology, this technological aspects. She brings in whole-class instruction, small group, and independent work. I think that my favorite thing that she does for our Spanish-speaking students and then for our Spanish-language learners is she includes the vocabulary that's used in typical English Language Arts instruction for teaching foundational reading skills. She uses those same exact terms as she's teaching the Spanish. So some of the instructional strategies are used for them to pick up inference or to use the context clues and the resources around them to grasp that Spanish language and use it. And I guess that part that I appreciate most about that is it shows all of our language learners, right? Our Spanish-language learners, our English-language learners, multilingual learners, that these skills transcend all language and you can use them to learn how to read in any language. And it's been a joy to watch our students really promoting that collaboration. Like I think Derek and Emily nailed it with all of the celebrations and all of the things that you see with students. The confidence is there. We have students who are able to hear their language and speak their language and serve as experts in teaching their classmates. It's been a joy to see them have these opportunities. Our students who are learning Spanish for the first time, you hear them with their teachers, you hear them with Mrs. Cron, even with me, using terms like "hola," you know? "Adios," you hear them with Mrs. Cron in the car line and she goes, "Nos vamos, hasta mañana." It's these beautiful interactions where the language becomes more than just what happens in that 20 minutes in the classroom. And I'm excited to see how it continues to grow, how it can continue with that collaboration that goes, that really supports that, how are we going to grasp language? How are we going to use language, a new language in a new way, or reinforce a language that we already have? So Derek and Emily, I agree with everything you said, but I really wanted to emphasize the skills that are able to transcend language throughout, to help students understand that these same skills can help you learn how to read and access any language. So thank you very much for your time this evening.
So now I'm going to move into the curricular work that was completed this year. I had the pleasure of collaborating with our FLESS teachers to develop the second and third-grade units for FLESS. And so on this slide, you're going to see the different themes for the units. Each unit is six to seven weeks. It's connected to cultural lessons, it's connected to Spanish-speaking cultural lessons, and it also supports the acquisition of grade-level Spanish academic language, just like Par just spoke to. So in your green folders, you have the curriculum for the second and third grade. So if you can just look at your folders for that. And we're going to move into our final guiding question, which is what are the future work projects?
Thank you to the team for doing a wonderful job presenting what that is like in the classroom. So I'm going to talk to you now about what are some future work projects that we see ahead of us. So tonight, in your green folders, you do see the second and third-grade curriculum that Dr. Pueyo and her team worked to develop this year. We also recognize that we have ahead of us to also develop the grade four and the grade five curriculum. And we also recognize we need to have continued collaboration. We have been working with our middle school leaders and we have been working with our world language department chairs at the high schools. And we're, we're looking ahead as this cohort moves forward, what's that programming going to look like so that we have that K-12 experience for these students? So we certainly recognize that we need to expand the Spanish opportunities in middle school. We are looking at the possibility of allowing a path for our students to enroll in Spanish III as freshmen. We also want to increase the number of students who earn the seal of biliteracy. That is an assessment that students can take that demonstrates that they have mastered more than one language. And we also want to encourage our students who do enjoy learning another language to explore bilingual education. We know that this is a needed field and we have developed out that career pathway, that education pathway. We now have the Intro to Education course at our two high schools. It would be wonderful to encourage students that are, have enjoyed the FLESS program to consider bilingual education. So with this, tonight, we would be looking for approval to post the second and third grade FLESS Spanish Language Arts curriculum for community review. But we are happy to take questions and discussion. And hopefully the team will assist me here in answering. Any questions that you have?
Questions? Anyone want to start?
I have a few. So I came prepared to try to convince the district of how beneficial this program is and I don't need to. This presentation was outstanding and I heard the words joy and beautiful and connecting and this is what we're experiencing and it's, it's so needed. So thank you for your leadership, the whole team. My question is, how, how long will it take before every child in our district has access to these kinds of language opportunities from pre-K to 12?
Okay, so right now, we have obviously recommended the FLESS program for Pleasant Hill and Johnson because there are two sites that have the largest Spanish bilingual population. That is why we made that decision for FLESS at those buildings. Our team continues to recommend FLESS as the programming model for those two buildings, but if the board is interested in exploring and expanding that programming option, it certainly, I do want to say it would be a lift and it'd be work. As Dr. Schuler mentioned in his board, his report tonight, we are going through the process of developing Vision 2026. So my recommendation would be the, looking at exploring and expanding programming opportunities is something that we look at when we are having conversations in strategic planning.
Other questions or comments?
Go ahead.
Mine is quick. Have you discussed the difference you see between the three times a week at 20 minutes versus the one time a week for an hour?
Before they actually tackle that, I do want to say this team that you see right here meets monthly to discuss that implementation. So we have actually had this conversation multiple times, so that's why they're able to come up here quickly to answer to it.
Yeah, in regards to the two different models, definitely having it for an hour one day a week, we discover is not as beneficial as spreading it out and having it multiple times during the week. We haven't arrived exactly as to what, how many days a week would that would look like, whether it be 30 minutes a day or 20 minutes a day. We're in discussion about that still, but we do know that the model we're running at Johnson, although it is effective, it's, there's a more effective model I think that we can implement as we move forward with the program.
Thank you. And so our plan is to, as the years progress, we start including second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade?
Correct. This cohort would be the cohort we continue to add a grade level to and then as the first graders come in.
Matriculate. So I can see where that, scheduling-wise, that could be challenging. And at those two schools, will it just be considered, as you said, like a special? You know, I think this, the scheduling, so something will drop out then? Like what?
Well, right, once we get into third, fourth, and fifth grade, the topics that you will see, well, first of all, we've developed out third grade. So the topics that you see as part of those curricular units are also aligned to science and social studies, units that we currently study. And so the first and second grade topics that we have developed out in FLESS are also common themes in first and second grade. So we're trying to bring in content that we're already teaching in English within that Spanish Language Arts experience.
Okay, that's wonderful. Thanks. I'd like to hear that. And again, I echo Mary, I think it's a great program and nice presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Paulson, did you have something?
Yeah, two, two quick things. The second thing, before I get to the second thing, can you go to slide five? I want to come back to that and my point number two. But first, from a staffing standpoint, we're going to be using the same teachers from first grade and they'll go through second and third, we're not adding more staffing, right? Same, same group of teachers.
Dr. Pueyo will address that. I'm not sure what slide five is actually.
The SCL slide.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I'll get to that in a minute.
So with respect to staffing, we will, we do anticipate, anticipate a 0.5 increase for Johnson. And that is because when we originally started planning, the, we didn't necessarily, well, the number of students that have exited the program are less than what we projected. And so that, with that particular building, we do see an additional need for FTE, but at Pleasant Hill at the time, we are able to run the program with the multilingual staff that we have, supporting our students.
Okay. And I'll echo the aspirations to try to do this at the other elementary schools too over time. When I looked at this slide the other day in preparation for tonight, that first bullet point under windows and mirrors really struck me. And I'm going to kind of wade into what's made into a very politically contentious topic, but isn't that statement essentially culturally responsive teaching? Isn't that one of the precepts that, that students see themselves in their curriculum, see themselves in the experience, see their background? Other people get a window into that? I mean, that's, that's what I read when I saw that first bullet point.
Correct.
Okay, good.
Yes.
I got it.
Yeah.
Can I just, one, one quick thought? So, and maybe to come back to, I think, Mary launched the, the conversation. I, I get the aspiration to see this expanded, right, to, to other buildings. But there's an element of it that native-speaking students, right, provide the context to apply that language outside of the classroom. So while you can provide a language experience, just don't assume, be careful to assume you can simply replicate this experience in a building that does not have the same bilingual or Spanish-speaking population, right? It's kind of, kind of like dual-language programs, right? Another kind of great opportunity, but there are a lot of districts that moved to create dual-language opportunities that weren't authentic as they, as, as authentic as they were designed to be, where you truly have about half, you know, the, the native-speaking population, right, half that come into that. So I just, I don't rush us into it in that I wouldn't just assume because it's worked at Johnson and Pleasant Hill that the same exact program can replicate other places, right? They were, the group is very, very targeted and where they chose to start, meaning that even as we look in the future to perhaps expand, it may not look exactly this way just because each of our schools has a different composition of students, so.
Could that be other languages, though? I know we have so many languages spoken within our district. Are we close on anything else? I think I've asked that question before.
You don't have another bilingual population. I think you have other languages that have multiple dialects that don't quite arrives at the, I'm, I'm speaking for Lee Maurice when she can do a better job.
No problem. The, the other language, like our second language is Burmese, and we are not close to having 20 students at a school, which would make us a bilingual site. I think we have one school that has about 13 students that speak that language. So we're not there yet.
Other questions?
I just want to follow up, if that's okay? So I, I just suspected that was going to come up in the conversation because we've talked about this before with Johnson and Pleasant Hill being a site with more Spanish-speaking students. But having spent some time leading international schools, seeing kids from all around the world come and learn, the language that we use is French. So when 200 elementary kids are all learning French from three, two, three, and four years old, as they grow up through the school, it's a different, I understand it's a different model than FLESS, but it, FLESS, of course, isn't the only model to begin teaching young children different languages. And so as they all begin to learn these shared words and expressions, they all do begin to use them. So my follow-up question then would be, are we thinking ahead, what other models can be used with our schools that don't have a majority or a large enough population of Spanish-speaking students? We also should name that, there's many languages. We could do Chinese, we could do all, all these different languages, but... But when children hear multiple languages being spoken, whether it's their native language or not, they experience a kind of multiculturalism or multilingualism that's helpful to everybody. We know this. So I'm saying, advocate for not being restricted to the populations of our schools as we think to the future, but recognize there's other models that can work just fine. With that, then, my question maybe from Melissa being, if we continue to expand these language opportunities, then if we have a child who started Amieta Jefferson and is now in fourth or fifth grade, who's had multiple years of Spanish instruction, and then a student moves into the district in fifth grade with none, are they going to be able to access these second or third or fourth or fifth grade standards? And at what point we want to begin doing different grouping, like the family grouping or other ways of doing reading grouping that connects students with their ability level as they enter the district?
So you asked a lot, and I want, and Dr. Pueyo and I will address both topics you've brought to us. So first and foremost, I do want to remind the board that this recommendation for FLESS came out of a study about how are we best going to address the requirement of teaching Spanish Language Arts to our transitional bilingual students. And so through that study with a committee, we determined that FLESS was a programming model for these two buildings, but we also, we do still need to do curricular work for our other bilingual sites that don't have as large of a population, and what that Spanish Language Arts experience looks like for Sandberg and for Washington and our other elementary sites that have a much smaller bilingual population. And so when you spoke and asked about what does this other language experience look like, I do want to remind everyone that we still have that curricular work that's going to take place. And with that curricular work is, we are going to be looking into English Language Arts instruction coming up at the elementary level. And Dr. Pueyo and I have had talked about, when we look at English Language Arts instruction, how do we also pair Spanish Language Arts instruction within that content area? So we recognize we still have that language work to do. And then your second question was really with regards to students moving in, correct? And so Dr. Pueyo can speak to that.
So with students moving in right now, you know, obviously with the program being implemented at the first grade, all of our students are at the same level. But as we continue to build the curriculum, you know, teachers are going to differentiate the curriculum based on where students are at. And so that would happen within the classroom. And so there's a lot of different ways that teachers can, you know, can support students that have not had all of the exposure, but it really just, on our part, we just really have to look at the curriculum, look at the needs of the student, and really like tailor that curriculum to meet the needs of students. And I, this is something that our teachers do with our students. Obviously, now we're doing it with Spanish, and so I'm confident that our teachers will be able to differentiate that curriculum for our students coming in that don't have that background.
In addition to what Lee Marie said, the question, the way we approach that, be no different than when we have students who transfer to Johnson School from Mexico. They have no background or any curriculum exposure in District 200, and they're in fifth grade or fourth grade. Like Lee Marie said, we put a lot of supports around that student. We make sure we fill the gaps and the holes. And so inevitably, that situation you described is going to happen. Hopefully, it doesn't happen in droves, where we have a large groups of individuals who come in, but even if that happens like that, we have the supports in place, the systems in place to support those kinds of students, because we do, we handle that and we deal with that situation on a daily basis and every year. So I'm glad you asked that question. It's a very good question. But we do anticipate that and have the supports in place to support those kids when they come in. So thanks.
Other questions or comments?
I just have a quick question, and I apologize, I just don't remember. So this is implemented in all sections of first grade right now. Was that, oh, this is what I can't remember. I couldn't remember if that was always the case, that it was going to be in every section, or it was only going to be in certain sections because of the number of native-speaking students? Does that make sense?
Yes. I'm glad you asked that, because it's been a year since we spoke about this. So you are correct. It is implemented in every first-grade classroom at Pleasant Hill and Johnson, and that is specifically why we chose FLESS, is because it would have been challenging to group students into like one classroom. We have so many bilingual Spanish speakers across all of our classrooms, and the FLESS model was one that allowed us to teach the Spanish Language Arts to all students then.
Okay, thank you. Like I said, I just didn't remember how that was going to play out.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I ask for a motion and a second to approve the second and third grade FLESS Spanish Language Arts curriculum for community review as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Booton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Paulson. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you call the roll?
Can I, just for the record, I just wanted to make sure I announce that Mr. Long arrived at the beginning of this agenda item, so he will be voting on this item, so.
I didn't understand what you just said.
I said Dave Long arrived at the beginning of this, so he will be voting on this.
Mrs. Hutchinson?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Next up is the approval of the 2022-2023 fee schedule. Dr. Schuler?
You have a recommendation in front of you for your fee schedule for next school year. Just a reminder to the board, we actually reduced those fees going into this school year and across the board, at least on your core registration fees, we're not recommending any change over the current school year. There are a few course-specific fees that are adjusted, and just as a reminder, those always fluctuate year to year based on the actual costs that are associated with those specific user fees, but your kind of core registration fees are not changing from the current school year. We're still recommending them at the reduced level that they were at. Andrew Keefe, anything you want to add to that?
No, sir.
Board members, any questions or comments?
I have a quick one.
Dr. Abell?
Especially from the earlier presentation on the esports. Is there a way we can find out what counts as a sport? Is there a list of sports versus activities?
Sure, we can get that for you.
Because, I ask because the activities don't incur fees, right?
The activities, so a number of years back, the district made some adjustments to the actual registration fee and actually included any activity fees in your base registration fee. So it is only competition sports that have a separate fee. Any of your like club fees are actually encompassed in the student's registration fee.
Basically, competition, more or less.
Correct.
So just to follow up on that, basically, what Mr. Biskin said earlier is the esports.
I have to get that for you. I don't want to speculate incorrectly on whether they're charging a fee for that or not. I will get you that information, though.
That's a good question.
Other questions or comments?
I just have a quick one. With the graduation, you know, there's a $5 increase for increased costs, like what are those costs that increased?
The recommendation came from the high schools. I don't know specifically offhand. We just asked them, are there any changes in fees? And then specifically, they both came back and said, after speaking with each other, that it would recommend a $5 increase in the fees. I would imagine it just has to do with preparing and getting everything ready for graduation, but we'll find out what that specifically is.
Okay. And then I just saw at the bottom here that for yearbooks, that those are not eligible for the waiver. And I'm just, are there, is there something in the district, though? Like, I'm thinking especially for seniors, you know, if someone can't, because yearbooks are expensive. And if someone can't afford one, are there mechanisms in the district, like either, like through our, you know, booster clubs or something, you know what I mean, that helps provide those for students, or is that, no?
Yeah, I'd have to get that answer for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Just one comment, and I'm not sure that it's specifically listed here, but, and I'm maybe torn about suggesting this or commenting on it. Is there a way to determine, or with the middle school and high school, how many of the students are using the planners that are purchased for each student? Because I kind of personally cringe as we throw them away each year. And I would love for students to be using them, but the reality is, I don't know that many are. That's all. Thanks.
Yeah. So again, we can certainly ask our middle schools for that information specifically. I don't know off the.
It's middle school and high school.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I ask for a motion and a second to approve the 2022-2023 student fee schedule as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Booton. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes, yes.
Yes. Okay, next up is written reports. Attached to the agenda was the monthly financial reports, the FOIA report, the board communication log, the citizens advisory committee report. Reports from board members, board committee reports, committee notes from the social-emotional learning committee, community engagement committee, facility committee were attached to the board agenda. Dr. Schuler, is there any other information?
I do not.
Anything from board members? Other reports from board members? Mrs. Booton?
So two things. I recently visited Monroe, and it was great to see the students, and I hadn't been at a school in a little while, and just a really great visit, seeing the classrooms and, you know, what's going on and how involved the teachers and Mr. Buckar with all the students, and it was really great to be in a building. Second, and I intended this to be a celebration that I was going to talk about, but in light of some of the things we heard tonight, I feel like I need to. I'm a parent at Edison, and I, so I was aware of the presentations that was given over the last three days, and I attended the presentation this morning. I asked to attend it as a board member, and I thought it was done very well. And I think for someone to say that was garbage, as we heard tonight, I think is so incredibly insulting to the students who put this together and were brave enough to present it to their peers. These are actual experiences of students that they discussed. And I felt like the kids who were, the students who were in the audience were attentive to it, and they were listening to it. I asked my son later on what he thought of it, and he said he thought it was good. He thought his friends, they were ones, confused me a little bit, but I explained it to him. It was just, he misunderstood what they said. The use, the, the use of the N-word. When I was running for school board, I met with every principal in the district as part of my campaign. And almost every principal brought up the subject of this type of language or what was going on within the schools with students. This is a real thing. This is happening in our schools, that students of color are hearing this in the hallways. This is a real thing, and it needs to be discussed. And I think coming from, and it was, I remember being a little bit stunned at how prevalent it was and how, I do want to say, though, but how much the principals of the high schools especially were really, excuse me, targeting it and working on this and really trying to address it. So I think that's very important to say, so I don't want it to seem like it's not being addressed, but it is something that they hear and say in the halls, and I'm glad that they addressed it. And I thought it was well done. I thought it was appropriate. And again, I think the impact of students hearing it from their peers, this is happening to me. And I just think that has, that's such a big thing to the mirrors and windows. This is what's happening to me. People are walking up to me in the hall and grabbing my braids. That's a real thing. And it's incredibly frustrating to me that we need to, of all the talk that we have about mental health of kids, when they tell us their story, we have to believe them. These girls were telling their story. It was, it's an extremely important story that needs to be heard. And I stand by these girls. I stand by the teacher who supports them and what they're trying to do in their school. And I asked when they, about not wanting to have questions asked. I'll share what I, when I talked to the girls, and then I talked to the teacher sponsor afterwards, and I asked about the not asking questions. And I'll just be very open about this. And I said, it was very interesting to me, because I said, I, I think, when I see an African-American woman with braids, I think they're beautiful. I think they're stunning, and I see them as art, and I can appreciate how long that takes to do. And I said, I, I just would genuinely want to ask like genuine questions, like, how do they, how does that work? Because I'm like, I can't do that to my hair. I don't, I don't have that type of hair. I can't do it to my hair. I'm just genuinely interested. And she said, you know, she said, it's just the way you approach it, you know, and, you know, and just say, you know, if you don't mind, may I ask, you know, how long does that take? Or how does that, you know, it's like, it's just the way that you approach the question, you know? And I said, I understand. I can go to Google, and I can Google it, you know, but I, but it was just interesting to hear that, I think, because in our community, if I recall, I think our district is, is it seven or eight percent African-American? I'm sorry, I haven't looked at that in a bit. Is that about right? And so I think when people see something different like that, I think, I don't know, it's almost, it's kind, and I'm not, I'm not putting these in the same boat, but, you know, when women are pregnant and they talk about how people just come and touch their bellies, you know, it's like, hello, this is my body, like, and this is a young woman's hair. Like, you can't just walk up and touch it without their permission, you know? And I, and I can understand how if someone is, keeps asking you that question over and over and over, it's like, I am a human, like, I, you know, this is, I am a human. Can you notice me and not just a part of me that may look different from you? You know what I mean? All the time, I can understand how that was frustrating, or how that can be frustrating. So I just want to put that in context of when they say, don't ask questions. It's like, treat them as a human, you know, and it's, I understood it. And I, and also, one thing, other thing I wanted to say about the N-word is that I, I did not take it that they were saying to use it freely in school. That's not how I interpreted it. They were, what they were saying is how African-Americans, African-Americans are claiming the N-word back. And when you hear it between, this was in the slide, that it's more of a friend or buddy between African-Americans, and it's just a word that has such terrible connotations in our nation's history, that it, you know, that it just shouldn't be used, you know, in any other context. So I think it was a celebration. I attended the presentation. I met the girls who gave it. I met the teacher who is sponsoring this. They have a story. We need to listen, and we need to be open to listening to it. And I really thank these students for being brave enough to do it. I thank Mrs. Bednar for allowing them to do it. And I just think it was, it was a good thing for our schools today. So thank you. schools today. So, thank you.
Other reports from board members?
Yeah, I have one. That was awesome. Thank you.
Okay. Topics for future discussion: Vision 2026 strategic plan, community engagement report, social emotional learning SCL report, innovation and technology report. Board members, are there any other additional topics you would like to have added for future discussion? Okay. Our next...
I have one.
Yes.
I think, I, I just want to say this quickly. Last board meeting was closed Black History Month. It also happened to be February 23rd, the second anniversary of the death of Ahmaud Arbery. And I was reflecting deeply on actually a New York Times article that a parent wrote. I felt it was relevant to this, one of our parents, Issa McCully from Wheaton College. And he was talking about the celebration of Black History Month, and some of its unintended consequences of highlighting black achievement outside of a telling of the American story that includes diverse perspectives. And so that prompted me, again, to revisit the, the question of our social studies curriculum holistically. And I would like to name that as a, as a critical component of our future planning, so that in future years, we don't have the same kind of misunderstandings that continue to perpetuate harm in our community. I don't need to go into that, because Susan addressed that so thoroughly. Thank you. But we need to go all the way back in our early years of our curriculum to make sure we're teaching our community the truth about the American story, strengths and weaknesses, so we have a more healthy community in, in the next generation. So I would like a comprehensive review of our social studies curriculum for future discussion.
Thank you. Next, eh, next regular meeting is April 13th, 2022. Announcements, April 27th, 2022 is committee of the whole. One change and announcement I want to make is the June board meeting is going to change from June 8th. It will now be June 15th. Mrs. Hutchinson, if you could send out a, a new reminder on that. I'd like us to move to adjourn to closed session pursuant to the Illinois Open Meetings Act exemptions 5ILCS 120/2 subparagraph C, subparagraph 1, and 5ILCS 120/2 subparagraph C, subparagraph 10. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hanlon. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you call the roll?
Yes.
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 There is no action expected following closed session. Our meeting is adjourned.